Call the order, this Rocky Hill Board of Education Budget Workshop, Town of Rocky Hill, Town Council Chambers, the time is now 6:36. If everyone please stand for the pledge. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, greetings and welcome, everyone. Tonight is our first budget workshop. With that, I'll turn it over to Dr. Zito.
Thank you very much, Mr. Slattery. Appreciate it. Appreciate the board coming up tonight. Just a couple opening remarks. First of all, I want to thank Mr. Cosker. He caught a mistake in the cover letter. You have a revised cover letter. When we totaled up the costs for special ed, the impact is the same, about 2.3 million, but there was a line item that we had carried over from a year or two ago mistakenly, so it's now accurate. So, thank you for catching that, very sharp. You also have a couple of sheets in the opening tabs that were changed. One just had an incorrect year on it, the numbers are correct, and another, actually, the old sheet refers to textbooks, and that's actually money set aside for curriculum writing. So, you have, you know, it's a work in progress, and we're gonna catch mistakes here and there. We appreciate when you let us know and we fix them. So, happy to present the opening budget tonight. Just as a kind of an opening remark, a year ago, I stood here on the first budget night with a 5.84% budget. So, we are a little bit leaner this year at 4.87. Overall, a very lean budget. I'll discuss it in detail. What I'd like to do is get through the slides. I think we have 18 or 19 questions that board members sent in. I appreciate you doing that. So, I'd like to go through the slides, respond to any questions you have on the slides before I step away from the podium. Then, we will distribute the questions. We have them all put together with answers, and we'll take you through the answers. Then, at the next step of the process would be to start going through the book. Chris Gays here tonight. He is gonna present Thursday. That's our plan, because it gets, you know, this process takes a while the first day, and then typically, technology is reserved for the second evening, and we like to devote some significant time, rather, to technology to get you guys through that. So, here we are, coming in with a budget of $56,141,000. It's about a $2.6 million increase. As I said, it's a little under 5%. That's about a point better than we saw last year on the opening slide. As you see, typically, as you find in any school district, the salaries and benefits account for well over 80%, about 82.5%. Two-thirds of the costs here are salary-based, another 15% for health insurance and other fringe benefits, and then you see how it plays out. Other major drivers, transportation, 4.5%, supplies, 3.6%. It's all broken out for you there. You have that in your books. But, again, a $56 million budget, you could see what the various major line items account for. We can look at those data a little bit differently with a classic pie chart, and again, the salaries are 2/3, benefits about 15%. So, talk about this every year. Anytime we look at, you know, what really impacts the budget, it's the cost of the employees, more than anything else. So, one thing we started doing years ago, because board members appreciated this, was we actually took the 4.87% increase, and we break down that number for you, so you can see precisely what's driving the recommended increase in spending. The salaries, the overall, after some deductions and some additions, the salaries alone account for 3.05%, which is actually pretty good if you think about those of you that have served on all the negotiating committees. We pretty much negotiate 3% raises pretty consistently with all groups across the board, including administrators, teachers, non-affiliated administrators, which would be the people at the table, all the way down to parent educators, crossing guards, pretty much across the board, we do 3% raises. So, it shouldn't come as a shock that salaries are going up 3%. If we did nothing alone but just the salaries, our budget would be at 3%. Benefits account for another 1.21% of that overall increase. That's because the health insurance, at this point, we're estimating is going up. We have an estimate, I think, in the budget at eight and a quarter. Could come in a little higher, could come in a little lower. Those of you that are on the board and have been with us a while, understand that we don't typically lock in on that insurance number with precision until later in the spring, but the way the charter is set up, we have to make some educated guesses now. So, if nothing else happened, the people that you've employed and that you've negotiated contracts with, including their health insurance, would be at a 4.26 budget, attempting to keep everything level, basically. I haven't added any positions to this budget. In fact, there's one I added with one offset. We've cut some elementary teachers, and we'll talk about that in a second. And then, you see the other areas that are driving the budget, you know, tuition, in the grand scheme of things, $168,000. There's some offsets and some deducts that have brought that down, but basically, pretty lean budget. There's not a lot of fat in this budget, not a lot of wiggle room. When we look at enrollment, it's extremely stable, and that's helping us maintain costs here, but it's not helping with savings, because it's not declining. So, when enrollment stays flat, you're typically going to see an ability to control costs, but not a lot of areas in which to save money. Conversely, if we were adding 200 kids a year, we'd see a skyrocketing in costs, because we would be adding staff to match the increase in enrollment. What we are seeing, this is no longer, you know, your grandfather's Rocky Hill, we're seeing some unique challenges here. I've got some data for the last 12, 13 years we can look at, but we continue to see an increase in special education students, and a very sharp increase in students identified as EL learners, English language learners, multilingual learners, those students, a big increase. And then, this year, again, medical insurance went up, but if you remember, last year, we got good news, because when we switched from Cigna to Anthem, we saved the town about a million dollars. A little more than half of that is now coming back, and we knew that. We were very transparent at the time that we were getting a very low cost, but with the way the insurance market works, rates would then bounce up again the following year. So, I talked briefly about the increase. Here are some hard numbers. In special education, October 1, 2012, that actually was my first year in Rocky Hill, we had 231 identified students in that report. The enrollment has been roughly the same over this time. It hasn't really fluctuated significantly from 25 to 26. I think at our peak, we might have been around 2,700 students, but we now have 417 identified kids. If you look at that slide, that's an 80% increase in 13 years. That's massive, and that's just not a bunch of Rocky Hill kids who have historically been here getting identified. We have a huge number of kids moving in that are already identified in other districts as requiring special education. That is driving a lot of the changes we'll talk about tonight with respect to the staffing, and it's not something we really have any control over, per se, when students move in and they are eligible for services. If you look at the ML numbers, they've gone up even more significantly. Back in October of 2012, we had 108 kids in our EL programming. We're now up to 290. That's a 168% increase in 11 years, actually from 2013 to 2024. So, that's massive, and that has an impact on staffing and how we run the school district as well. As I said, the enrollment is very stable. We have an increase of two students from last year, so it's a very manageable number from that standpoint. And on October 1, we had 34 kids that were participating in homeschooling. And then, I also look at what I call the transience rate. So, we talk about this every year, but I wanna keep an eye on this. We have stable enrollment. So, when we look at that rate, what we do is we know our seniors graduated, and we know we took our new kindergarten kids in. So, I don't worry about the seniors who leave and the new K kids. They're all starting. But, within those students from grades one going into senior year, how many kids left the district, how many came in, you could see that this year, we registered 247 kids after February 1, 247 new kids to Rocky Hill, but our overall number only changed by two. And when I asked Tom to then look at disenrollments, it's almost identical. So, we've got roughly 250 kids who came in and another 250 who left. So, we continue to deal with transancy. We're lucky that the numbers pretty much take care of themselves, and it's been this way for years. It's interesting, but the similar percentage of kids leaves. But, with that being said, overall, stable numbers, but a lot of movement within those numbers. NASDAQ is projecting that we will continue to decrease slightly over the next three years, an 86 kid decrease over three years. So, if you break that out, you know, a little under 30 per year. We didn't see that this year with an increase of two, but that's like a weather forecast. It could be off, you know, they say it's gonna be a foot of snow, and it's not a foot of snow, it's eight or nine inches of snow. That's a forecast. So, here's what we did with the staffing. So, when we looked at just the requests coming in and without making a lot of changes, we would have been at a 5.76. I added an athletic trainer. I hired her already. And the reason I did that is because we're seeing a trend throughout the state. Every district is hiring their own athletic director. They're getting away from consulting services and going with an athletic trainer of their own. We wanted to go with, we didn't wanna lose Emma. She's fantastic. She had an offer from another district, and I outbid them, basically, and got an extra month. So, we've got an 11-month athletic trainer, but there's an offset there. We're spending roughly 60-something thousand on the consulting firm that we use. We're no longer gonna have to use those dollars. That salary, that 111 includes her salary package as well, which we assume is for a family of four. Could be lower than that if it's not a family package, but that's the total cost right there anticipated. So, that was an add, again, with the deduct in professional services for the contract that we won't need anymore. Three teachers, we're reducing by three. Two are at the elementary level. Another teacher is a high school position that we didn't fill this year, so it stayed in the budget. We restructured how we're providing reading support at the high school, and we didn't fill that position, and we don't need that position. So, we didn't spend the money on it this year, and it's coming out of next year's budget. We're anticipating two retirements. Typically, there's an offset with retirements when we hire someone with a lower level of experience versus a senior teacher leaving. We have two behavior specialists that we added this year that were not in the approved budget last year. I'll talk about them a little bit. For various reasons, we're not planning on having them back next year because of, again, the movement of students within special education. We're getting a little leaner with our lunch aids. Summer salaries, we actually found some efficiencies to trim that down without impacting ESY or COL at all, but we can save a little money there. And there were questions tonight, and I'll get into them. We are appealing back another permanent building sub at each school. Before COVID, we had six permanent building subs. During the height of the pandemic, we were up to 21. We had four in each school and five at the high school. We also have an extra one at the high school, because I'm required by law to have somebody in the pool. So, we use a building sub who's certified in CPR and first aid to serve anytime the pool is in activity for physical education or swimming practice. I need that person, because by law, the teacher has to be certified in PE, have the appropriate credential for CPR and first aid, and you have to have a monitor. And that's because years ago, a couple of kids drowned in Connecticut pools. So, we also have that one extra person at the high school, but we are now peeling back for, our proposal next year is to go to two in each building with three at the high school. Again, during the height of the pandemic, 21 of these positions, and the problem was, you know, teachers were being placed on quarantine for 10 days at a time, rampant absences. So, trying to get back to a sense of normalcy and keep the budget under control. So, Ms. LaFredo, I won't be shy about calling you out. I knew you were gonna ask me a question about elementary enrollment. I had already prepared the slides, so I was delighted to get your question. So, these are up-to-the-minute enrollments, based on actual live children sitting in the district right now, with the exception of kindergarten, where I essentially replicate the number. So, that's why you see the same number in both Stevens and Westhill for K and first grade. It's always pretty similar. So, what you have on this slide is you have the projected enrollment for next year based on current numbers in the district. You also have the number of sections we plan on running at each elementary school, and the mean class size, along with a cap. So, you can see, at Westhill, classes will range, you know, 17 roughly in K and I, 19.6 at II, and 21 kids in grade III. The cap in second and third grade goes up to 22. So, it's tight, but it's within budget. So, that's a reduction of two FTE at Westhill. If you look at, because right now, I have six third-grade teachers at Westhill. If you look at Stevens School, no change for FTE. You could see those numbers as well. Kindergarten numbers around 16, second grade, 21 kids, and then we look at third grade, five sections, 19.4. These things do fluctuate. We analyze this very closely over the summer. In past years, if I've had to, I've hired another teacher. I've just informed the board. It's typically not a problem. We're not gonna run kindergarten classes of 24, 25, you know, something crazy happens. There are years like this year at Stevens, I think in second grade, we're slightly over. You know, it happens. It's not an exact science, and I can't, you know, I can't tell a family, "Oh, you're not allowed to buy that house, because our kindergarten numbers don't support your child." So, I have to take those kids when they move in, but we try to be as efficient as possible and stay within the board guidelines. And then, for Mozier, if you, you know, we get a better economy of scale there, because we're serving an entire grade level in the same school, but you could see what those projections look like. Mozier currently has 17 classroom teachers. We plan on 17 again next year. The cap at those grade levels is 25, and you could see what the mean class sizes look like. And that, those are actual numbers. The fourth grade number is the exact number coming in combined between Stevens and Westhill, and the, right now, there's 193 fourth graders moving up to grade V. So, those are your numbers at the elementary level. So, when we look at a lot of moving parts in the certified salary account, you see reflected in front of you the teacher step increase on this slide here, about $300,000. Teacher gross wages, 3% negotiated salary increase, $681,000. You're aware of the process for administrative, degree changes, you know, somebody goes from a master's level to a sixth year, somebody gets a doctoral degree. There are stipends associated with that, which increase their salary. Additional staffing, now here's some stuff I had to do post-budget last year. You recall, during my evaluation, I talked about some of the issues we were having with some of the kids at the high school and creating an alternative program within the high school for kids who were credit deficient, experiencing issues with behavior. And so, we did some moving around. Mr. Schuman is now full-time at the high school, so I did have to hire a .6 music teacher for Mozier. I made a couple of adjustments in physical education and math. Math actually was for the middle school. We had some issues with enrollment, where I had a .8 person I had to upgrade to a 1.0. With the exception of the music, those other increases were all to part-time people that moved up in their FTE, and you see the overall cost there. Again, we talked about the retirements, anticipating at least two. We'll probably get more, but I'm conservative, banking on two. Three classroom positions that I discussed, the behavioral person, the BCBA, Board Certified Behavioral Analyst, that person was moved out of the salary line into the non-certified line. We pay them similarly to a teacher, but they're technically not teachers. They don't hold a teacher credential. They're not part of the union. They are certified as Board Certified Behavioral Analyst, so they do work closely with kids, but from a technical standpoint, they're non-certified. For the non-certified salaries, you see that the budgeted increases were $237,000. That's basically a function of wage agreements. Additional staffing this year has increased by about $300,000. I changed the lead nurse to a 12-month nursing supervisor. The needs at ESY were becoming so significant. ESY, COL, a lot going on in the summer, and then with sports starting in August, it's pretty much morphed into a 12-month job. So, she is now working as an overall supervisor, and we've extended her contract. It's a year, an annual 12-month contract versus the nurses who work 10 months. So, that shows the differential there. We added a person to assist with the culinary operations at the Dream Cafe. Those of you that frequent that place know who Justin is. He was working with Sedexo. We hired him to assist us, because the operation has expanded significantly since we opened it. We'll talk about that later. It's doing so well that the budget line devoted to culinary supplies and food has not been touched at all, because the revenue is covering all those expenses. Two additional BCBA's were hired specifically to deal with a significant increase in students that have serious issues, in some cases moved into Rocky Hill. And then, I don't know if you've been following this, some of you I'm sure have, the CIAC changed the rule about offseason practices. So, sports now can, coaches can conduct year-round practice. We hired a part-time fitness coach. You probably know who Coach Acidorian is. I hired him on a part-time basis to work with the kids in the weight room, run the weight room, and help out with summer practices, and not a huge cost, but I think very beneficial, particularly with the way the rules changed, to try to stay ahead of it with athletics. So, we have Pete working in a part-time position as a fitness coach. And then, I talked about the athletic trainer. The base salary is there in front of you, with that number, $80,000, and then, we're offsetting roughly $60,000 that we were paying select physical therapy. We're not paying them anymore next year. So, we converted that into salary, so we would have our own person. We get more time with her now. She's a full-time Rocky Hill employee. She's not being pulled into other districts, and we actually will have her for the full month of August do the way I set up, because sports start in August. So, we're happy with that decision. When we look at the parent educators, again, the negotiated salary increases were $99,000. Big number, $248,000 this year that we had to add due to students. We have many students who moved in with, in many cases, a one-to-one identified on the IEP. That happens. It happens all the time, and you saw those numbers, you know, growing at an alarming rate each year. Two of the folks we put into behavior positions, we don't have in next year's budget. I'll talk about why, but basically, those kids are either are leaving the district or are scheduled to leave the district. We trimmed back a lunch aid position, and I talked about the summer positions being reduced slightly. We also have some offsets overall with substitute teachers. You'll see, I talked about, and I'll talk about this later in the slides, but we decreased those building subs, those permanent building subs. So, every school will have two next year instead of three. The savings there was about $87,000, and we are, we just budgeted a little bit differently within the line items, but the subs, non-certified, is going up $42,000. That's because we have a couple of permanent parent subs, and we have them reflected differently in the budget. So, the overall increase for salaries is $1.6 million. Benefits, the health insurance, that's the Anthem number right there, $532,000 increase. Some non-certified people have go into the pension system, and then, some minor line items with reimbursements and so forth, FICA, Medicare. Overall increase in benefits of $647,000. Professional services, overall increase of $81,000. There's the number for the athletic director. Obviously, you see an offset of 52.5 on the athletic contract that I was referencing earlier. The only line item here that really jumps out at me is the pupil services number at 145, and that is to deal with special services, such as evaluations, services for magnet kids. So, we've talked about this in the past, that if an identified student resident of Rocky Hill, it's not necessarily an outplacement, even if they're going to a magnet school, we are billed for special ed services. If they're getting speech therapy, for example, we will receive a bill, and we have to pay that bill. If they're getting speech therapy, for example, we will receive a bill and we have to pay that bill. So overall, professional services, you see 81,000. And again, the major deduct there was the removal of the contract for the athletic trainer. Tuition, only up $168,000. You know, these lines are very volatile. Kids move in, kids move out. We've got, we typically build a couple of spots in anticipating what will happen in following years so we don't get caught off guard. But you see that the overall number in tuition is going up about 168,000. That also includes rate increases and tuition at the, the Boag schools as well. So where are we in spending? We like to look at this chart every year. As you know, there are 24 towns in District Reference Group D. We are 17th in spending. So if we even came up to the mean, we would add $1,455 per child. So we, we remain very efficient with the allocation of dollars. So ranking 17th, where do you think we would be academically in this group on a K through 12 ranking? 17th perhaps? No. So on math, K through 12, we're first in our group, even though we're 17th in spending. And in ELA, we're also first in our group despite being 17th in spending. So we're pleased with the results. Wendy did a very good job with you, with the curriculum committee going over 18 slides. They're all in your folder. We also did an extensive evening at the high school, if you recall, at the November board meeting where we went through 18 or 19 slides in detail. In the interest of time, we've streamlined, streamlined. I don't need to take you through 18 or 19 slides tonight. But we did want to show you where we stand in spending and where we stand on the overall district performance index, which is the K-12 rank both for math and language arts. And we are first. So that's good. Where are we on special education expenditures? Still very efficient with our dollars, devoting 22.51% of the budget there. And you see that we're fourth in terms of efficiency, you know, 3/4 of a percent behind Old Saybrook there. So still very efficient with the use of our dollars. If you look at some of the other districts on this list, you know, East Hampton's spending 31% of their budget on special ed. So we've got a lot going on. It's a growing issue here, but Amy Stevenson and Jesse Herman and our elementary vice principals slash supervisors do a great job along with our, our building-based principals in terms of handling these issues as they come through the district. So what would it look like if we came up to the state of Connecticut spending? I, you know, the council loves to see this slide every year. So if we just spent what the state spent, our budget would go up $7 million. We just went to the average district in Connecticut and spent the same. Even if we just went up that, to the Derg mean, which I gave you about $1,400, our budget would go up 3.6 million. So again, we, we think it's very fair to say that the taxpayers are getting an excellent return, first-place return on, you know, significantly below-average costs. So great results at a below-average cost. We are 119 out of 166 in spending per child in the state of Connecticut. Puts us in the bottom 28% of spending. But in terms of relative wealth, we're right around the median. We're 77 out of 169, puts us in the top 46%. So we're kind of a typical commit, Connecticut community, right around the median there. But we're in the lower, basically, lower quartile on spending. So that speaks to efficiency. So we're proud of those numbers, very proud of the kids and the teachers for those test results and happy to answer any questions. We think it's a very straightforward, transparent budget. So before I get into the written questions, I'm happy to respond to anything regarding the slides.
Thank you, Dr. Teo.
Yeah, I had a question in regards to the classroom teachers that you said one was a high school teacher that we're just not replacing.
Yeah, we, we have a high school teacher, a teaching position that was devoted to reading that was, we did not fill this year. So we restructured how those services are being delivered.
What about the other two?
The other two are elementary teachers that we anticipate not needing next year. And again, my policy informally has always been no layoffs. I do not anticipate layoffs. These are very, there's a lot of volatility. Keep in mind, we have about 260 teachers. Somebody's always going out on maternity leave. Somebody's always telling us they're staying home to raise the kids. People move, people get promoted to assistant principals in other towns. People's spouses move out of state. Things happen. So with 260 teachers, more or less, I'm not concerned about a couple reductions. We will handle those and I can assure you, nobody's going to lose a position unless you dramatically reduce the number or the council dramatically reduces the number. If that happens, that would be out of my control. But at 487, nobody's going to lose a job.
Okay, that was just my concern.
Yeah, no, valid concern.
Thank you, Dr. Teo. Thank you, Ms. Murphia. Anyone else have questions? Ms. Minella?
No, I, I, we all have questions, I think. Can we maybe go through the slides so if we have the same questions on the same slide at one at a time? I mean, I hate to bounce all over the place, but.
Do you want to go back through the slides again typically?
Well, not go through the slides, but just so if we, I guess, go ahead, Maria. You start and then I'll see if I have questions on the same slide. Go ahead.
Okay. I have a question on the special education slide. For the number of, of students that have been identified at 417 for October 1 of 2024?
Yep.
There you go. Quick question regarding the 417. Are, is that number also including 504s?
No.
Those are just IEPs?
IEPs only. 504 is not special education.
While we're on that same point, what's, what's our percentage right now? Because I know it's a topic we talk about a lot. That 417 is like 16? 14, 15?
Well, yeah, it's 417 out of, if somebody wants to do their math exactly, 2532, right?
Okay. I can do that math. Okay, thanks.
Yeah.
Which is ballpark on state average, too?
It's below, actually.
Below state average, okay. I think it's an important point, just because we talk about special ed being a driver and we're still, even though our numbers are high on special ed, we're still below state average as far as percentage of students with an IEP. Sorry.
No, that's it?
Just on the same point, that's all.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Minella. Do you have any other questions? Mr. Cosker, was that your only?
Oh, far from it, I'm sure. Let's see.
I just want to say one other thing, too, Maria. That number also, the 417, also does not include all the students that were in referral at that time. So you've got the 417 students that have already been identified. And we typically run 20 to 30 kids in referrals. So another whole list to kick that after October 1, we'll probably run numbers, no longer 417. It's almost February and we're, we're higher than that.
So all those, like, let's just say, like, the preschoolers that you, you guys are getting the calls to?
But also K-12, we've got a real senior in the class. I know you had to ask that question and we can answer it. You're going to see the referrals that you have.
Okay.
Right now, at this moment, I don't think it's including the preschoolers. We have 20 kids in referral and that's K-12. So, and that's not including special ed.
About 16.4 by my, my count.
I thought it was a little higher. Yeah, I thought it was around 16.
I actually just looked at the data on ESA and we were at 14.5.
It's not always up with this all the time. These are the October 1 numbers, so 16.4.
Yeah, so we're ballpark, ballpark on state average, okay.
I have another question on special education, so.
Please, stay on that, that's great. Yeah, that's great.
The last slide where it was comparison of all the different districts. And we were ranked fourth at our, so it's 22% of our budget. Is there a way to compare towns and showing how effective we're being? So we're serving 417 students with, with 12,000. Like, how many students is North Haven serving for 14,000 just above us? Like, are we, I'm just curious.
Like a per pupil, almost?
Yes, yes.
Of that number?
Yeah, we, we could look at the enrollment. What I don't have in front of me is the enrollment for those districts. So it's hard to do without, I mean, we could, it might take some time to pull that together.
Yeah. It's not super grand. I guess I just.
Because I'm just, I'm just trying to say, you have to be really careful when you look at that because you could have one student that's worth $400,000.
Okay.
It's very hard, like, this is kind of an overall, like, our percentage. So you're saying, like, okay, we're doing a good job because of the percentage. But when you start digging into information, if you have a small district that has, like, lower, a lot lower enrollment and they might have, you know, a lot of kids that collect so much money, so it's a little bit hard to compare.
Okay, no, that makes sense. That, it goes into play with my thought process. Like, I'm proud that we're fourth on this list, but does it make sense that we're fourth on our list? Like, I just wanted, I guess, more.
Well, it does because we program in the district. So my theory would be that those districts that are up to 30, 31% probably have a higher percentage of their students outplaced. As you know, some of those expenses, as Amy said, could go up to 400,000. That would be expensive, but not unheard of. Typically, we would see anywhere from 150 to 200 per child. If you think about the fact that under Amy's direction, we've created the Dream Cafe, Dream Academy. We have the Pathways Program, which has a couple of special ed students. But even within the, within the schools, the Compass Program, the TLC Program, some of the programs within the district where we're servicing kids that in previous years probably would have been outplaced. They're in the district and they're saving money when we do that. I mean, just alone at the Dream Academy, I think we have 11 students the last time we talked about this. If you figure that each one of those kids would cost 150 to 200,000, that's well over a million dollars. We're running that program with a handful of pair educators and a teacher. So when you, when you, when you look at that from a cost analysis, it's very good. That's probably why our number is where it is.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Gavin?
I have a follow-up question on the special ed, just real quick. So you mentioned $400,000 per student, but there's, in the first few pages, you have an $89,000 threshold. Does that, does that not apply?
Yeah, so what happens is, that's a good question. This comes up usually every year. We are required, the state policy requires every district to spend at the local level four and a half times the average tuition. So that's roughly $89,000, four and a half times our, our normal per pupil. Once you exceed that, you get a roughly 70% of the delta coming back to the district. So for a $400,000 kid, you're on the hook for the first 89,000.
Plus 30%.
You get, and 30% of the 310, exactly.
Yeah, okay. So that's not, yeah, right, that's, I'm good.
But that adds up. I mean, over scale, with a lot of kids only getting 70% back.
There's not a 400,000, I mean, you'd have to be spending a million dollars on one student to get to 400,000.
No, no.
Right?
Right, but you still have to put out the costs.
You're upfront and then you start getting your.
You hope you're going to get, you hope you're going to get.
Yeah, no, no, I saw that we didn't get all of it back, so I understand.
When I say a student might, one student might cost that much, I mean, that's the cost of.
Tuition.
Paying the student. I'm not in fact, I'm in the excess cost that you do get excess cost back. You do get some of that money back. But you have to output the money first. You still have to output that money and then crash your frame and hopefully.
Yeah, they, and we talked about this. They pay us typically in February and then another one later in the spring, typically in May.
Yeah, I just, I just wanted to make sure it was circulating in my head correctly.
You're on the hook for the first 89 and then you're paying for 30% of everything over 89,000.
But you have to lay it all out.
Correct, yeah, yeah.
That wasn't really my question. I just wanted to make sure I understood. The staffing changes here?
Yes.
Can we update this? Because I, I'm lost because we're losing, taking away two behavioral specialists, but then when we go to salaries, we're adding two BCAs, we're adding culinary staff. Can we get like an updated, more thorough chart of the staffing changes?
That's, that's, that's very detailed right there. I can talk through it again if you'd like. I mean, that's, that's all the detail. That's extremely level, detailed.
No, the salaries, yeah, yeah, no, can you do a?
Oh, a separate chart?
Yeah, 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 just so that we have it instead of, sorry, I'm looking at this.
You're looking at the salary slide?
The staff, that one.
This one?
Staffing changes.
That doesn't.
It doesn't have the plus, it doesn't have the pluses on the salary.
Why would you do a plus? If the number's a positive, if it's a plus.
There's only one plus.
No, I, I understand.
If you go to the salaries page, there's.
You're asking about the mid-year changes on the salary page.
Five different people.
Okay.
You know what I mean?
Yeah, I understand you, yeah. We can, we can create an update for you for, for Thursday.
Thank you, Mr. Gavin. Mr. Cosker, what do you got?
Well, I appreciate everyone else going first, so it gets my questions out of the way. It doesn't look like I have so many. One is on the tuition, on special tuition numbers. Do we know, or I'm sure we know, can you tell us the number of students outplaced with public and private, that breakdown? Or, because I saw the, in the cover letter, I saw like a mention of 15 and then I was a little confused and then.
Yeah, so this is what I can tell you. That, those lines go back and forth.
Of course, I'm saying snapshot, what the budget's planning.
At this moment in time, today.
Sure, it changes.
There are three students in public and there are one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight in private. We have 11. But today, we have two students that are.
I, I understand that, yeah.
And we don't know if they're going to go to public or private because whoever can take them. We've got call into public, call into private, we don't know.
So currently 11, 3 and 8. But you're planning for the 15 because you're figuring, you're just targeting educated guess you'll be at 15 for next year.
Well, we, we also, you know.
That's fair, I mean, I understand that.
We build typically, we, there's a spot built in for student A.
Of course, yes, right.
Because we, we can't be caught in a situation where we go, oh, we don't have the funding for this kid right now. Too bad, I have to lay off a teacher. So, I mean, this is a, we write about this extensively. I appreciate you catching that error in the, in the math portion there. But the overall, what I'm trying to convey in that letter is it's, it's the most volatile, unpredictable section of the budget. If a, if a typical student moves in from, you know, Michigan in the middle of September with no IEP, we, you know, he's a 10th grader. We enroll him, we put him in his chem, you know, his science class, his math class, so forth. He just slides right in. If a child comes in with significant needs, a paraprofessional, nursing services, what have you, that's expensive and that's why we have to budget. And sometimes kids move into Rocky Hill, it happens in every district, and they move here and they stay at their outplace school, but the, but the financial responsibility shifts to Rocky Hill because the kid stays at this, you know, whatever school, private school. Parent moves from Newington into Rocky Hill, we bear the cost. So we have to budget for that. So it's tough. And yet again, you asked and we'll get into it. I didn't give a breakdown by school and where they would be attending because it's such a small number. It's like when the state suppresses data, I, I can't, I don't want to get into.
That's, I'm only asking what you're allowed to give. I understand identifiable.
I can't give you that because I don't want to identify the kids.
I understand that, I understand that, yeah. No, thank you, I appreciate that. And, and, yeah, I understand the workings of that. And they're, and they're working at the state level. They're, they're trying to get more money and trying to do that. So they're doing that all the time. They're trying for every year, but they, they continue to try. There's like five bills out there asking for it.
Well, one thing I think they're trying to do, which would be helpful, is that I think they're trying to set tuition rates, because these tuition rates are always just like that, like tuition for one student. Like, I can tell you right now and I can't tell you names, but I have in front of me tuition for one student of 155,000. It's just tuition, it's not transportation, it's not summer, it's not related. It's just a fee tuition. And then another student is 84,000. So the range in tuition for students is varied.
All over the place.
It varies. And that's very challenging budget because I, I don't know, you know, some student might get an $89,000 tuition, it might be a $155,000 tuition. And then you're billed, then you're a para, you get billed like another $50,000 for that and summer school and transportation and student, then counseling, then you get separately billed for all of these things.
Yeah, I mean, and to be clear, I'm not complaining about these numbers. I clearly would not be on the side of spending the money on these students. So just to be clear, I understand the requirements and the legal and all that stuff and I get all that. And the, yeah, tuitions are different, all that stuff. So a couple, so one which I, I guess you'll probably address later, maybe not, not the time to address it, is the behavior specialist, you know, cutting a couple of positions just seems odd given our increased need of behaviors, you know, issues in students.
Yeah, we addressed that in the, in the questions. I mean, and I can address it now. We, we had some kids and it's, it's in the written responses you'll receive that were exhibiting some physically dangerous behaviors.
Right, so we've taken those pairs out because they're not in district, is the idea?
No, we, we've, we brought in behavior specialists to deal.
Right.
Yeah, paraeducators.
I get that.
Were not able to deal with some of these kids. We went with people that were a little more physically capable of sustaining punches and kicks. Not everybody can sustain an aggressive punch or kick. In both of those situations, we anticipate those students not being in the district.
Got it.
I don't want to, again, get into deep specifics tonight.
It's good enough, yeah, that's good enough.
But again, we're not going to budget something if we, if we're pretty confident that we're not going to need it.
Makes sense. And this is separate from special education, enrollment and transency. I was just wondering if you had a sense of how our numbers compare to other districts with, again, two hundred forty-seven. It does seem like a big number coming in and out every year.
I don't have data on that other than anecdotally.
Because that's like what, ten percent or something?
I could tell you, we've always been told we have an atypical number of multifamily units in this town compared to other Derg D districts.
Okay.
So, large apartment complexes, Century Hills, Stepney, you know, throughout the town. So, when you look at this, the large apartment complexes, a lot of the in and out movement that we see are out of the larger apartment complexes.
And then my last question sort of for now is the, the Derg thing. How often is that adjusted or updated? Like, do we move Dergs very often? I would imagine they look at it now and again.
Very frequently, I, I was working.
Feel like we've been in this forever, but.
I was working in Simsbury a long time ago, when they were demoted, like relegated in Premier Soccer down to B and they went crazy.
Yeah. But we've been D for a long time, from what I recall.
Simsbury, Glassbury used to be A, Avon, they all got dropped to B because New Canaan and those places are so wealthy in comparison. But we've been in D for a long time and they, I can't remember. I know, I've been around long enough, it, it used to be ERGs, educational reference groups, but that's a long time ago.
No, it's, I was just curious again, because you always do a great job of comparing us within D, but also to B and stuff, which is helpful, so that's great.
We also compare them to B, yeah, we, we look at B because B, because none of the, the, the B districts are in our geographic area. The A districts are exclusively Fairfield County, so that, that's, I mean, they're spending so much on, on education, but, you know, what's the cost of a median home in New Canaan? Two million dollars now, so it's just not, it's not a valid type of comparison for us. Go to the written questions, Chuck?
Yeah, I think so. Thank you, Dr. Zito. And thank you, board members, those were great questions.
So, as I said at the outset of the presentation, we really appreciate the, the homework that the board members did. Nineteen questions came in from a wide range of board members. I appreciate that, so we'll just take you kind of right through these sheets. The first question was an excellent question, just basically asking what the various account lines are. I think years ago Chuck did an overview on this, but it's been quite some time. But the uniform chart of accounts lays out a series of numbers. So, there's five segments, there's a four-digit number, that's the fund. A two-digit number designates the program, a three-digit number for the object, a four-digit number for the function and a two-digit code for the location. So, if you go kind of to the bottom of the response there, we have a, an account code, one thousand, zero, six, one, eleven, twenty-two, ten, oh, five. So, when you look at that, this is how it's laid out. Thousand tells us it's the overall general operating fund. Six is the program account, so that's an art program account. The object is one eleven, that's certified salaries. The function is improvement of instructional services and the oh, five, the last two digits are the location. So, that's West Hill. Mojer, for example, anytime you see one, zero, ten, that's Mojer. So, that's, that's kind of just an overview. I know, Brian, you asked that question, you're relatively new to the board, but it's come up in the past. Does that make sense to you now?
Yes.
I know you wanted that breakdown of how it's done, so.
Thank you.
And that's helpful for, for me to even look at it, because I don't remember that from year to year. Second question did refer to an art account that has a big increase and the response is that we had a teacher at the very bottom of the salary schedule who left the district for another job. We ran a search this summer, the best candidate was a much more experienced teacher. That's the, that happens sometimes too, not as frequently, but sometimes we do see that, we want to go for quality and get the best person we can. Question three had to do with BCBAs, we talked about that earlier. So, they were allocated one point five positions to West Hill that were newly hired in twenty-four, twenty-five. Talked about that earlier, to accommodate student needs. In the other account, there was a B CBA position previously budgeted and an assigned account code thirty-seven, which is an undesigned account. It's now assigned to Mojer, so again, just moving within accounts for that particular item. Had a question about the increase for the paraeducators, the salary, and you find that in your book. The overall number there for that program goes up eight point eight one percent. We talked about this in the slides. We, between paraeducators and behavior specialists, we hired seven people that came into the district due to student needs. That's also driven by contractual wages and that eight point eight one percent increase. And then we coupled that with corresponding budget reductions, eliminating those two people Mr. Kosker just asked me about. One launch aid reduction and trimming the summer program, so the overall increase is eight point eight one. Another special ed question that seems to be the theme of the night, Amy, you were right, it would be a lot of special ed questions here. Object three twenty-three has a thirty-seven point three one percent increase. Is it district-wide? Yes, it's district-wide, that accounts for social workers, psychologists, occupational physical therapists, paraeducators, services for kids attending magnet schools, as well as evaluation stemming from the IEP process. So, psychological testing, educational testing, et cetera. So, it's definitely a district-wide item, it's not isolated to one school. Question six, I talked about that briefly. That was fifty thousand dollars that was allocated for Dream Cafe culinary expenses. So, that would include supplies, food and beverages and so forth. We anticipated needing about fifty thousand dollars. Due to the significant increase in sales, it's a self-sustaining operation from that, that standpoint. So, we haven't touched that line item, so.
I thought we had a grant for that.
The grant, I think we're, we've suspended the grant, that was a startup grant, it's not a, it's not going to be a perpetual grant. So, for this year, we did budget fifty thousand in the operating budget, but we haven't touched it. So, we don't anticipate needing to do that. You guys have been great, you supported the, the van purchase. The catering has expanded significantly. You know, Amy and I had talked last year, I mean, she and Aaron really had the idea that the teachers are typically ordering Subway one day a week. Why not have them order from the Dream Cafe, which they're doing and it's generating revenue and covering the cost of the program, so. She's expanding, she's got some businesses approaching now as well, so. ESPN? Be big?
Channel three.
Chris Berman?
Yeah, Channel three.
Channel three, yeah.
Yeah, ESPN is a first donor.
TV, something TV.
Shout out during.
I think that's on Henkel.
We really need to expand the kitchen to go to Bristol.
ESPN, yeah, that's a big operation down there in Bristol.
You got ten cafeterias.
Question about the Mojer PE account, so it's a long-winded answer, but basically I talked about that. We had a point eight teacher who became full-time, actually, he does point two at the high school. But the codes have moved around a little bit too from prior years. So, what Chuck explained to me, because I had questions about this, was that the PE and health, the PE teachers are all coded program-wise to a combination of PE and health, so the salaries are split around. So, that looks like a big increase in that line item, but there's a corresponding offset on the health line item. The bottom line is, we had a point eight teacher who's still point eight at Mojer, but now he does a period at the high school to work in that alternative program. Starts his day there, works with those kids in that program and then he reports to Mojer. If you look at question eight, so, we're going to get into that with response to eleven. So, that's a question about special ed numbers, West Hill and so forth. We'll get into all of the schools in item eleven. Number nine, I talked about that already, why is West Hill eliminated the salary for the behavioral program? That really, if we look at line item twenty-two, eleven, twelve, twenty, oh, five, we just reassigned that salary there. So, the Compass Program is still being offered at West Hill School, so that program was not eliminated. There was a change in line items in the budget. Yep.
We have ten students in the Compass Program. We started out with like three, we have ten. And we're having problems that we have need more kids, we're at capacity with them, so definitely not a whole.
The social work services were not eliminated. Chuck had them, had the BCBAs coded under social work. They're just, they've been moved out of certified into a non-certified salary count, I talked about that earlier. Question eleven asked essentially for a breakdown similar to number eight, so you have that in front of you. We have the school with the numbers of students, plus those in referral for special services and the special ed breakdown for FTE at each school. So, you can see it Stevens in West Hill, seventy-eight kids at West Hill, eighty at Stevens, seven teachers at each school, Mojer, fifty-one students, five teachers, GMS, seventy-three with seven, the high school, one hundred and three with, with eight, including the, the teacher at Pathways and the Dream Academy, one teacher. So, it, it's fairly equitable if you do the math and look at those ratios, they line up pretty favorably. I think we do a good job of making sure that each of the schools is staffed in an equitable manner in terms of FTE relative to numbers of students.
And this does not include the Bertha Street case.
Right, that's independent of the, and we have, right now, we have.
Break again, excuse me.
Yeah, three, three classes of arts again.
Well, right now, they're in Bertha Street.
Oh, moving in, out of Bertha Street, into, oh, I got you.
We've got a host of eight kids that we know about that are in like Bertha Street right now, that are going to be transitioning, so it doesn't.
In some exits.
Twelve was, was the question, teased her a little earlier, but Ms. Lefredo, and I did share those projections for the classroom numbers on the slides, so you have those if you want to refer to your slides. Stay within the guidelines on staffing at the elementary level. Okay, I spent a lot of time on thirteen already, but just to give you the history, prior to the pandemic, we had to build one permanent building sub at each school. And two at the high school, one, one extra for the pool. At the height of the pandemic, we were up to twenty-one building subs, so we needed them. Because, you know, teachers would call and say, I've just been put on quarantine for ten days and, or my kid has COVID and I can't leave the house for ten, you know. You, we all lived through that together, it was kind of a crazy time. We're trying to get back to normal in terms of where the budget used to be, trying to be efficient with the dollars. And the other thing is, we're changing the way we handle the substitute call-in system, we're moving to frontline, we're moving away from ready-sub. Ready-sub was unable to assign jobs out of the gate to building subs. So, what would happen in, in frequently is the ready-sub job would go up. Somebody on the daily sub pool would see it and take the assignment, which we appreciate. But then you could have a situation where a building, permanent building sub who's at that school every day is sitting in the office, helping greet people, answering the phone, staying busy, helping out with whatever the principal needs, but not necessarily in every case being assigned to a classroom. So, we're going to get more efficient because frontline can assign, you know, teacher A is out, they can assign that job to a building permanent sub right away. So, we're trying to get it as efficient as possible. So, we think that's the way to go, we just switched vendors and we're going with frontline next year. So, it's a new sub management system. I think the staff, I think the principals in particular will be very pleased with it. Great question also about the new state mandate of sick leave. For those of you that are not aware, the state now has a new paid sick leave law that, you know, certain number of employees, I think it's any company over fifty, any organization over fifty is required to provide forty hours of paid sick leave per year. This will have very minimal impact on Rocky Hill. The district require, the law requires the district to provide all employees with an annual allocation of forty hours of paid sick leave. All of our bargaining contracts already provide paid sick leave in excess of that amount. For the first six months of the year, it's only twenty hours. I know there are districts going around saying you get forty hours, they're not accurate, we are, it's twenty, because it's only half a year. The, the forty is for annual. So, for the, from January first, you know, three, four weeks ago, through June thirtieth, employees are entitled to twenty hours of paid sick leave. So, anybody that has more than three and a half sick days in their bank, we're covered. We had a couple oddball situations where people weren't there and they will accrue towards those twenty hours. But by and large, ninety-eight point nine percent of our employees have their time. Next year, it goes to twelve months, so it goes to roughly six days. Our teachers, for example, get fifteen days sick leave in their contract. It's front-loaded. So, the only, the only real difference is that they can use the hours in one hour increments. We just have to adjust to that, that's the law, but we don't think it's going to be a big challenge for the district.
Can I ask you a question too?
It's contractual, so in the contract, does it state that teachers can only use their sick time for X, Y and Z?
Do, it, what about?
No, the, the forty hours is, is without limit and we can't even request documentation.
Right, I was going to ask, okay.
We, we know that, we've already met with the union, we've already, we've got everything in order. They get it, they know it, Amy sent a letter out explaining this to everybody.
And so, it's only, so what I expect to them is for the first forty hours, twenty this year, forty next year, there's expanded reasons for sick leave and here are the expanded reasons. Once you exhausted your twenty or forty hours, then all other reasons for sick leave are dependent on the contract. You know, you go by the contract, so that's just how we're doing it. So, I don't think, we're not going to make all these amendments to the contracts because we can just manage it like that, with that communication and then we're just managing it. And so, once people, we don't ask any questions and once they've exhausted that leave, then it goes to the contract.
And they don't get to put their forty on hold as their free forty.
Right.
The first time they're sick because their kid, they take a sick day for a kid's doctor appointment or they're sick because they wake up with a fever, seven hours gone from the forty. Day two, you're out, now you've used fourteen. That's how it's tracked.
Right.
Don't get to hold forty for golf and everything else on the side.
But financially, would that, does that affect the budget at all?
No, because we're not adding any time to anybody. They all get those days per their contract, they get more than that. There was only one certified person who didn't have the time and what we're doing is, we're not front-loading, we're saying you can accrue.
Okay.
So, you have to work, you know, the thirty hours to get one hour. So, it, it's not going to be an issue.
Okay, thank you.
Good question though, because I know a lot of people are thinking about this.
Well, I think around the state, unfortunately, there's misconceptions and districts doing all sorts of different things, so.
We have good lawyers and Amy's on this very, very aggressively.
I'm sure you did.
I talked about the two positions, again, we had students that were physically aggressive to the point where I needed people that could sustain the type of physical aggression. Unfortunately, not your typical paraprofessional, we didn't want to put people at risk. But those issues are, are being resolved or have been resolved, so we don't anticipate that need next year. That could change. It, you know, things change, people move in, things change. So, just, again, those are, we're planning a budget now based on what we know. As you've seen from the slides and as Mr. Gavin asked about, we'll present some information Thursday as well. Things change in a school district. I didn't know a year ago that everybody was going to start hiring their own athletic trainer. They did, so we had to respond to that. We, we talked at my evaluation about kids at the high school. We've had a couple of meetings last year about kids that were getting, you know, credit deficient in the halls a lot, trouble, not academically engaged. We created a program, we're, we have to adjust to things. We changed the way we supervise the nurses, we, we made Renee Gary a full-time supervisor. Again, the needs have changed, so, you know, this happens. So, again, with this situation right now, I don't anticipate it. That doesn't mean a year from now, I'm not going to sit here and go, hey, we had to hire a couple of people back because some other kids moved in and some things changed. It's a dynamic process here, budgeting, so we do our best at this point to give you as clear read as possible with the understanding that things change. Sure?
And there, you might be wondering like, well, if you're aggressive, why aren't we being able to straightaway why you're doing that? So, in this, these particular cases, the, some of these students have two to one, so two adults on one student because one on one was not enough. And there are times where we don't have any place, there's no school that will take the students, that happens. And when that happens, we, we have no choice, we have to educate the students. So, in this particular, these particular cases, the solution was, we had to have two adults to one student. to one student. And that's never happened since I've been in the district. And this year, it happened with two students. So this is what we're seeing. And we actually had one of the outplacement facilities call us and say they needed, they were contemplating three to one for students. And Jesse was saying that. So this is what we're seeing. So.
Yep.
We have to keep everybody safe. Like that's the, that's, that the students and staff have to be safe and that is, that's the priority.
Question sixteen was a question about lexicon or terminology. The concern was the term homeless and the recommendation was to go to the term unhoused. However, I did check the State Connecticut Department of Education website. As of this afternoon, the website was still referring to homeless education. The link is provided and using terminology such as homeless children and homelessness, but we will monitor that. And if, I know a board member should, we knew that there's a bill pending to change the term from homeless to unhoused. So if that bill is approved and state agencies change, we'll, we'll follow course. But it is, right now, we're just following what the state has. Number seventeen, Mr. Kosker, again, thank you for catching that error. You were correct. The costs didn't add up and they do now in the, in the cover letter. The overall impact of two-point-two million is the same, but there was a, one of the line items you noted was inaccurate, so that's been fixed. And I appreciate you bringing that up. You also had a question about five-sixty-one account. That's tuition only. The two-point-two-seven million factors in reimbursements under excess cost and other costs such as transportation, support services, et cetera. The five-sixty-one account is tuition only. So that, so those numbers would not match. Okay? You also, you asked about, and we talked about it earlier, fifteen students being outplaced. That's an estimate right now. Amy gave you the exact number of eleven. That's today. Could change tomorrow, probably is changing tomorrow or within the next few days. You know, the kids, you know, I, I answered in the bullet points there. Every outplacement exceeds the eighty-nine thousand dollar threshold. But a number of kids in district also exceed eighty-nine thousand. So we do get some reimbursement back on any kid who goes over eighty-nine thousand. We get seventy percent of the difference back. But as I wrote in the response, the outplacements, and it's important for the public to hear this and for the board, they're reserved for children with the most significant challenges. So we attempt to educate every child. Tom, you're familiar with this term, and the, the legal term is the least restrictive environment for the child. So we make every effort to, to keep kids in district in what we would consider the least restrictive environment. Even if that's a program within the district, it's still less restrictive than, say, an outplacement. But in some cases, kids have needs that simply can't be met in the district. We do have to sometimes place kids into other settings and we do that if, if that's the best thing for that individual child. As I wrote here, numbers have historically ranged from eleven to sixteen over the past several years. Outplacements are fluid in nature. As we talked about, kids move in, they move out, just like our transience rate is fairly high. Kids move in and move out. Within that two forty-seven that comes in, some of those kids are special needs, a few are probably outplacements. Sometimes outplacements move out. Parents no longer live in Rocky Hill. But as I said earlier, due to confidentiality, I, I can't give you a breakdown of this kid would be at Stevens in third grade, this kid would be at West Hill in third. I can't do that. I don't want to violate confidentiality. But I hope that answers those. Thank you. Okay. And then we also had a question about some late-breaking news with federal funds freezing. I guess a, a district judge just put a halt on the freeze. So I don't want to speculate on what-if scenarios, but what you do have in your book is that for the current year, we're receiving just under a million dollars in federal funding. That accounts for about one-point-eight percent of our budget. You know, I guess a good thing is we're not extremely reliant on federal funding. There are other districts with significant head start programs who get a lot of federal money. We don't because we're relatively affluent community here. We can verify the current funding streams won't be impacted and we'll, I even put a link there which says some more information on it if you want to look that up too. So at this point, yeah, that's what we know. We'll keep you updated on things as we move. So that covers all the questions you sent to us. Do the, it's about quarter of eight. I don't know how long you guys wanted to go. If you want to get, get started on the book, I know for Thursday, we're going to tee it off with, with Chris.
Start with Chris on Thursday.
With technology. But maybe you want to start working with the book or take a five-minute stretch?
Take five minutes?
It's really up to you guys.
Let's take a five-minute.
Five minutes?
So with that, I'll, yeah, I'll answer.
Motion to take a five-minute recess.
Moved by Mr. Gavin. Do I have a second? Seconded by Mr. Kosker. All in favor? All those opposed, the, the eyes have it nine-zero. We're in recess for five minutes. At eight, uh, seven forty-six.
Manella, Ray Manella.
Say one minute warning?
One minute warning.
Is that working now?
Yeah.
Yep. It's a good call. All right. Call back to order. Budget session, Rocky Hill Public Schools. All right, we had just finished going through the questions, we're gonna start with the book. Before we start with the book, I know Mr. Schaber indicated he had two questions.
Sure.
And then I'll ask if anyone else has any.
So, my first question is with the Ames property. The buildings are going online, how many students have we gained for?
I have one so far, total.
Okay.
I don't anticipate a large yield of students. When Altera came in, there was a lot of buzz about that project and it ended up with the maximum we saw ever coming out of there was seven kids. So, we'll monitor it, we'll let you know if it's problematic, but at this point, we have one student.
Okay, and my other question is on Thursday, can we get a P and L on Dream Cafe? How much revenue was brought in?
Revenue on Dream Cafe, yeah, I think I provided that earlier in the year.
I know we talked about it, I don't know if we ever...
I don't remember.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think of...
Definitely.
We definitely discussed it.
We'll get you an update on what the sales have been, revenue and receipts.
Right, thank you.
Anyone else have any questions? I do have one question, Dr. Zito. Obviously, the biggest increase on the budget is the salaries, and I know that we talked about that the increase is like a 3%. And I just want to be clear that, how that ranks or compares to schools around the district, or schools around the state or in our area?
I, you know, that's hard to say without getting the specifics on their budget. What I can do is try to pull some data on overall budget. I do have some access to what districts are coming in at for their first numbers, I can share them with you. It's typically not disaggregated by line item, but what I could tell you is that the 3%, those are all based on our settlements, which typically are right around the state average. You've negotiated every contract since you've been here with us, and we're typically right at 3%.
So, I just wanted to be clear that people who may not be involved in contracts of that, negotiations of that nature, that that is about the state average as far as the 3% increase.
Very much the state average, in fact, we tell our bargaining groups, you know, and this board's been great, look, I always tell them informally, the board is not going to, they respect you and they value your work. Don't come in asking for 9%, that's not gonna happen, but they're not gonna be one of these towns that demands a zero either, it's always been very reasonable here.
Yeah, whenever we do go through negotiations, we always have our attorney pull, whatever bargaining group we're dealing with, pull all that data for us, so we get a feel for surrounding towns as well as all the settlements that have taken place for whatever bargaining group we're negotiating with, and we always...
Come right around the average, pretty much.
Thank you. Mr. Gavin?
Just to look at that, it's 3% of the increase. If you look at it year over year on the salaries line item, it's 4.51 year to year. But, I just want to make sure that you knew that it wasn't just a flat 3%. Now, the salaries, when you look at that salaries page, it is a 3%.
Right.
Say that again? Is that including a step movement, is that how you're getting the four?
Step is 1.22.
If you look at the budget from last year, the increase is 1.630 million. If you divide that by 36, 128, 842, it's actually a 4.51% increase. However, as a percent of the budget as a whole, it's a 3% increase, but it's on that line item, it's a 4.51% increase.
Thank you.
Yeah, that gets into like we have in the, under the global section, it was showed on the side, you have the step movement as well as the general wage increase.
Yeah, all of the increases are in the salary chart, it's not all 100% the 3%.
Right, so it's degree changes, it's GWI and step, it's all three factors. You know, typically, our contracts settle at about 3%.
Yeah, the contracts, I think we did four years, which were 3, 3, 3, 3, 3 and 1/4, I think. But that line item is slightly...
Thank you, Dr. Zito, I just think it's important to understand that that's
Sure.
average for the state, so. With that, we will get into the books?
Yeah, we'll take you through the book, you're kind of high level, some of the, we don't want to be redundant, we need some time, I think you could probably try to wrap up around nine is what I've heard from a couple of board members. Been through the cover sheet, you have that. If you flip to the global tab, you see the pie chart, classic pie chart demonstrates those numbers a little bit differently. And then we go over to the following page, a lot of this stuff is covered in the slides, that's the overall budget drivers, salaries, benefits, professional services, we touched on all that information in the slides. It's a 4.78, 7% budget increase. Again, a little bit more in detail with the object breakdowns, so we look at certified salaries, Mr. Gavin was just talking about that. You see the breakdown there, the step increase, 1.22, the gross wages at 3%. Some changes with degrees, we just talked about that. Some changes with staffing, moving around, I talked about some of that on the slides, a variance of $703,000. So, we've been over that a couple of times, any questions about object 111? 112, we talked about that significantly with the slides too, the contractual increases, $237,000. A lot of staff added there this year, we talked about seven people, reassigned to B C, B A. See that line, put the athletic director in there too, about $736,000 there. Harris, object 113, we talked about the changes there. An increase of $238,000, I think Ms. Manella had a question about that overall. Object 113, I discussed it in the handouts. Talked about health insurance, as I said, we budgeted that for this budget at 8 and 1/4. If we have some, you know, again, it's an estimate, it may come in a little bit higher than that, it may come in a little bit lower. January is very early, but this is what the charter requires in terms of developing a budget. I won't be shocked if it settles at 8 or 9%, I wouldn't be, you know, 10% even, I wouldn't be shocked if it was around there, it's just, it's a fluid target, as you know, it's based on, you know, claims experiences, we're part of the statewide plan now. So, we'll just, we'll see where that settles out, but we think that's a good guess for this budget right now, 8 and 1/4. You'll get more information from the brokers when you move on, correct Chuck?
Yes, yep.
Pension, you know, minor amount, $24,000, you see the changes there. We're making some changes for the defined contribution into defined benefits. Tuition, we talked about that a little bit, you know, everyone, the tuition reimbursement, that's contractual, the teachers are entitled to some level of reimbursement for their coursework, administrators get that as well. Moving along to object 321, that's the, Wendy, had to give me a tutorial on this. The library search software, the high school's being upgraded to an EBSCO software system, we're grand for that. 322, that was a change on one of your handouts tonight, it's not foreign language textbooks, it's curriculum writing. That whole object is only about $8,000 there. Pupil services, we talked in the slides, I gave you some detail on the $145,000 there, object 323. We addressed that already. Next is object 510, transportation. We've been pretty happy with New Britain Transportation overall. See variance there. And if you skip to the second page, the whole summary, everything, including fuel, field trips, in and out of district, special ed, regular ed. An increase of about 3.64% for transportation, $93,000. Any questions about transportation, that's a fairly comprehensive information set, Chuck spends a lot of time on this.
Quick question, Dr. Zito.
We haven't talked about this in detail yet tonight.
Yeah, quick question on that one.
Mr. Klosker? Yeah.
The transportation, special ed out of district, is that where the magnet school, special education students fall, or do they fall somewhere else? Is this transportation for a special education student at a magnet school, right?
So, no, so the only time it would fall in that area is if that student attending the magnet school had transportation as a related service in their IEP.
Right, right, so that would be in there.
They would have to have that, and then that would be in there.
Okay, but otherwise, that's the outplacements generally.
Correct.
Right, so generally, that's what that number is, whatever number I'm on, 516, is the one I'm looking at.
Special ed out of district.
Right, especially that's out of district, out placements, except for a special situation where a student has in their plan, in their IEP, special transportation, okay. All right, cool, thank you.
All right, Dr. Zito, I have a couple more questions from, Mr. Clemens?
Uh, yeah, thank you. What year on the contract are we on with New Britain?
Yeah.
Four out of...
We're in year four right now.
Of?
Of five.
So, when we start, when, so when we start to go on a bid process?
Yeah, we'll have a conversation probably October.
October?
Yeah.
Thank you.
All right, and then Ms. Manella had a question, is that the question that you were asking? All right, excellent. All right, anybody, any other questions on transportation? All right, Dr. Zito?
Okay, we spent a lot of time earlier tonight, we had several questions about object 561, which is the overall tuition, you know, as Amy indicated earlier, there's a lot of moving parts here between kids coding public versus special ed private. We've really, I think, done a good job overall to control costs, the net impact, I think, was $168,000 total for all the tuition changes. So, again, we spent a lot of time on that earlier tonight. If you look at the next page, you've got your overall variance after all the moving parts of an increase of about $168,000. Other services. Total cost there, variance of about $45,000, some increases for technology and curriculum software, the copier contract is up a little bit. Athletic officials and proctors for events and security, overall increase for other services, object 590 is $45,000. Instructional supplies is pretty modestly funded with a slight increase of $19,000.
Excuse me, one question.
Mr. Clemens?
I just want to go back to 590.
90 account, yep.
Athletic officials, you're talking like referees, umpires, that seems pretty low for the amount of sports we have.
No, that's the increase, $3,500 increase.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Yeah, we're showing you here where the, where the budget's going up, we're breaking it down by account carry.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, that would be low if we could get all the... Object 611.
So, we can't get a call.
Yeah, if you don't mind, thank you.
Sure. Instructional supplies for 611, again, we're talking about increases there. We've gotta order some more science kits, Miss Free Science, the staff has been very pleased with that, but there are, there is a cost associated with those kits. The other costs, you know, very minimal here in terms of increases, overall $19,000, most of that devoted to the science kits. 641, we are looking to start revising the Spanish textbooks. $40,000 will give us a good start on that process with Spanish. Over time, it's probably gonna kind of end up at around $75,000 to $80,000 total, but the department's about like 40 was a good amount. I want, historically, the last three years in a row, I've cut the Spanish textbook request to get the number down. I felt strongly this year that the board should support the 40,000, it's the language that's most frequently taken by our students at high school, the class size reports reflect that as well, so we felt like this was the year, particularly since we're a point lower than last year to push through with at least some of the funding for some of the grade levels. Wendy, I think it was looking to start with Spanish one and two.
Yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna work backwards from the high school
Okay.
with the partial funding, with the hopes that in future years, we can move down
Yeah.
and extend to the middle school, who also needs, they also need an updated textbook.
So, three years in a row, I pushed it out and said, no, we're trying to get the number down for this year, I'm asking you to support the 40,000. In terms of dues and fees, again, minimal increases, we belong to, you know, Kinect Association of Boards of Education, for example, is raising their bill of accounts. You know, leave terms, these are up $570,000, pretty much, these dues have stayed pretty flat, with a $3,000 increase overall for all the different areas that we pay dues and fees to.
Can I just ask a quick question?
Ms. Morpheus?
For the, going back to the Spanish books, what is the total needed, just out of curiosity?
The total request was about $75,000, it's been that way for the last several years, that would be to do all the grade levels, we met with the department head, and he felt like 40,000 would purchase
The high school.
where we need it to be to get a good start and phase it in over time, and it was reasonable, and he was comfortable with that, I remember once we asked him to think about additional funding.
Okay.
So, don't be surprised if this goes through, that in next year's budget, I'm probably gonna again ask for more money specifically for Spanish textbooks.
Okay.
Educational data is the next tab, and as I said earlier, Wendy's been a really, really thorough job with it, all 18 in these slides. We've been through it numerous times, I like someone having a council as well, but I don't think we needed to dig into that this evening. Do you have those data in front of you, if that piece comes out, I'd be happy to revisit that at any time. The next tab is enrollment. Those are your NESDAQ projections, I talked about those earlier, they anticipate a decline in the next, over the next three years of 86 kids. If you look at page 11, it does show you some interesting numbers there in terms of national, and then New England's projected trends, and we're seeing a decline nationally. Connecticut is anticipated to drop more extensively than any of the other states in New England. They predict, you know, potentially losing 9.4% students up through, this is through 2031. So, we'll have to monitor that closely, we so far have been pretty flat. But, the advantage of declining enrollment is typically, if it's significant enough, you can accrue some cost savings. So, we'll continue to monitor that, but I found that to be interesting. It's really a function of birth rate, but also a function of individuals moving in, but as I said earlier, I enjoy working with this stuff and looking at these numbers. We see, I had Tom run a full report for me from February of last year, and as we saw, the number of families leaving almost matched identically with the number coming in. Hence, our enrollment change of two students, which is, you know, essentially a flat number year to year. So, that makes it easier to budget, because we don't have to add a lot of positions, we don't have to do a ton of cutting to try to keep the number reasonable.
And that factors in the four apartments coming in?
Yeah, like I said, we, to Mr. Schaber's question, one student, I mean, NESDAQ does look at that, they look at housing permits when they develop their projections, they look at birth rate, they look at all that information, and generally within the ballpark. They don't anticipate a big spike in enrollment here for us, so I think we're gonna continue to stay stable. We went through a period before we built Mojer, where the enrollment was rapidly climbing, for a few years, we were growing significant growth each year, 50, 70, 100 kids in a given year, I mean, for a while, we were... Do you remember those of you that have been on the board for a while, when we had, I think it was a total of 21 portable classrooms in the district, we were just adding them. You know, ad nauseam at West Hill, Stevens had a bunch of them behind the building, and we had to build Mojer, as a result, we luckily have kind of leveled out there.
What year did we build Mojer?
Mojer was 2019.
Opened in 2020, and then we closed right away.
Jason, as the principal, gave daily pandemic announcements.
Yes.
I remember those announcements during the pandemic, but that was year one, we opened Mojer and then the pandemic hit us. We talked earlier on the next comparative data, we kind of got into where we are. Ranked with spending in DIRD, you've got a bunch of information, versus the state, versus DIRD. You've got everything there in terms of comparative data where it breaks down. Happy with, you know, Steven, that Woody, we've kind of given the overview in terms of where we rank in DIRD on spending, and also where Rocky Hill ranks in terms of relative wealth in the state. Right around the midpoint, the state of wealth in the bottom quartile on spending, which I think is a good thing, means we're efficient. The next section is my favorite section of the budget, it's the one I ask Chuck to run for me all the time. Personal preference, but I find the object budget, I find this three-page report is the best tool in the budget from my standpoint. Take a look at this for a second. You know, if you turn to page three, for example, you see the grand total on page three. You know, if you turn to page three, for example, you see the grand total on page three. What the adopted budget was for twenty-four, twenty-five, what the proposal is, the fifty-six million. The percent difference, four point eight seven. It's a two point six million dollar increase. The FTE count is four fifty-four, so that gives you, that's all heads. It's not just teachers, but that's paraprofessionals, administrators, lunch monitors, you know, every single employee in the district. Everybody draws a check from the Board of Education. And then if you, just took you up to the top again at the beginning, you can see it broken down, certified staff, where the increases are. Uh, the head count there, the FTE count, the non-certified. It's kind of taking you through salaries for, uh, paraprofessionals, substitutes. You see that eighty-seven thousand dollar cut, the cut there. It's, it's a real nice way, in my view, of, of looking kind of big picture without getting into the weeds. We use the program details internally, and I, and I had a few questions from you on that, but that's really getting down into the nitty-gritty on different program accounts, different salaries, personnel split between schools, for example. To me, these three pages are, are, are probably the best thing for you to, to, to really understand exactly what's going on. Going down towards the middle of the page, if you look at group insurance, you see the increase there, eight and a quarter percent, five hundred thirty-two thousand. This is the document, I, I, like I said, I refer to this constantly, just to get a sense of where the district is, or where the spending is. I think you'll find this to be the most useful section. Happy to answer any questions you have on this, this particular document. This is nice to use, because it's three pages, you can take it with you, and stare at it and get a real good sense of what's going on in the district. Okay, um. Program budget. Chuck, uh, you wanna give us a, a, an overview of this, this is a little different way of looking at it from over?
Yeah, it's just like we talked about with the first question that we had. You know, the, through the chart of accounts, we can run these numbers in a lot of different ways. So, we typically look at it from an object standpoint, um, but I just wanted to give another variation. Sometimes we do look at the, uh, from a program standpoint. So again, it's just taking all those figures and, uh, presenting it in a different format. You know, we can run it by location, we can run it by, uh, functions, so there's a lot of different formats. You can, uh, look at the numbers, uh, at, so the program is just the, one of those other formats that, that we can, uh, take the budget and take a different snapshot and take a look at it. Sometimes, a lot of the, uh, building administrators like it from a program standpoint, um, because that's the world they live in. At Central Office, I, I, I personally like the budget, but again, it's just, if you look at the bottom line, uh, all the numbers are gonna tie out. It's just in the detail, it's presented in a different fashion.
Yeah, so it's like Chuck said, the grand total on this, this, uh, report, it's a two-page report. Four point eight seven percent increase, two points ten one dollars, just a different way of, of running the numbers, but it's the same exact, uh, impact on the budget at the end of the day. Then we get really into the weeds with these, the program reports where we start to break it down. You know, the next report is, what, twenty-something?
Program detail.
Yeah, program detail is thirty-five pages long.
Right.
Thirty-five page report. That's, you know, we, we had some questions come up tonight, I don't know if we'll dig through those. You can dig through them your own and continue to send questions to me.
Well, that's, from, from our standpoint, I mean, I'll, I'll use the detail to, you know, make that deeper dive, but from a board standpoint, uh, you know, we had a lot of questions where people move from, especially when comparing one year to the next. A lot of people, there's a lot of movement depending on student needs, um, especially in the special ed area. So you're gonna see one count go up and say, wow, that's going up fifty percent, but, um, once you start to understand it, there's gonna be an offset somewhere else, especially from a salary standpoint. And that's why when we present the budget, you know, we do the global tab, because that's at a high level. That's gonna show you where all the changes that we're proposing in the budget are, and we're gonna cover that with you. You can get into the detail, but a lot of times you're gonna have questions, and we had some of those, where, you know, there is gonna be an offset somewhere else, uh, within that detail. And that, that's, that's why we like to lead with the, um, the global tab to, to highlight all the big changes for you, so you get a, uh, good understanding of, you know, what's, what, at a high level, what's going on within the budget.
If you look at page thirty-five, again, it.
Quick question. Sorry, a quick question. Sorry, Dr. Zito, quick question, we cut you off there.
Yeah, go ahead.
You mentioned before, um, the all the different codes, what they mean, one thousand to fund. Um, location code, so oh-five is West Hill.
Yep.
Oh-one's a high school. Oh-two is GMS.
Yep.
Three is Stevens.
Yep.
Is four Mojer?
No, ten.
Ten's Mojer?
Yep.
Alright. And then five is West Hill, alright?
Yep.
Thank you.
So with.
Central Office is six.
And if you, you know, if it's helpful, I can send you what each of our, what each of, what our funds are, what our functions are, what our locations are, if you ever wanted to.
It just helps knowing the code, when you look at it, would, you know, wouldn't it be a lot to?
Yep.
With respect to the detailed reports, I mean, we've all had an opportunity to go through them, I think. My, my take on it would be that, at least in my personal going through it, most of, any of the large increases or, or cons- what would be notable increases have been addressed in the questions that were, that were asked in advance. So I don't know that we necessarily need to go through each page line by line. I would defer, you know, I would be interested if anyone feels that we should, I, I, I would have no problem with that, but I think that most of the increases were addressed, uh, in the, um, in the questions that were submitted and in the presentation. So, with that being said, um, I think we can probably forego going line by line through it. I would ask everyone just to take a, another look at it, now that we've had the presentation, and, um, and just if there are any questions, we can open with that before we.
Yeah. You also.
Before we start.
Three over the next two days, two to send questions, I mean, like I said, nineteen questions come in. Most of them over the weekend until yesterday, you know, today, we were having to get to them, I can't promise you we'll get to everyone. Something comes in Thursday at five thirty, I may not get to it, but if you get it to me tomorrow at some point, tomorrow evening, in the morning Thursday, we'll, we'll do our best to come back in with answers to your questions, so. Yeah, by, by no means, I mean, we wanna be as transparent as possible, so take this home with you. Here, we have another session potential we need next week, so we can take as long as you guys wanna take. I just thought that trying to get through the overview on the book tonight for now, it would be a good place for us.
I think that's.
We'll get into technology, which I know generates a lot of interest and questions with Chris, but Thursday. And again, keep in mind, even though we have three scheduled sessions, you don't have to adopt a board budget until.
Correct.
The second week of March.
Correct.
So it's not unheard of as well to say, hey, you know, look at February's regular board meeting, that is another opportunity to talk about budget, if you wanna talk about it. We've even scheduled special meetings in the past to, to deal with specific budget issues if, if questions come up, so.
In fact, I think we did that last year.
We go, alright, we're done, and we walk out of here, like it's, we're in this together until March, until you get to a number you're comfortable with. And then, of course, when the council makes their decision, we may have to reconvene to look at any impact from that decision as well.
Certainly. Okay, so with that, I think it's a good place to, probably to stop for the night, um.
You don't wanna get through the next few slides? Tab, I think we're.
Alright, yeah, let's push, let's push through that, and then we can start, so this way we'll start with technology.
Grants and entitlements, uh, we had some questions earlier, that's pretty straightforward. Where are we? Hold on a second, hold on a second.
We skipped technology.
Grant entitlements.
Let me catch up, let me catch up, that's a long, it's a big book, I just flipped a lot of pages.
We skipped technology, 'cause.
Yeah, we're gonna skip right now.
Chris will, Chris will do that on Thursday.
Alright, grants and entitlements, got it.
Right, right, I'm on grants and entitlements. So, federal, as I talked about earlier this year, nine hundred seventy-six thousand dollars, just a little bit under going. You see it broken down, Title One, Part A, Title Two, Title Three, you see those numbers. IDEA is the largest that supports our special ed programming for students ages five through age twenty-two. You see some state grants as well, uh, a much smaller number, about a hundred thousand total. Uh, again, this is, uh, roughly two percent of our, of, uh, the overall budget number, it's not part of the operating budget, this is above and beyond. We're blessed in a sense, we're not overly reliant on, um, this kind of funding, other districts much more heavily rely on. It's all very straightforward, this is really no difference with some, than previous years. We'll see if, uh, there are any changes, uh, we got any federal funding, we'll keep your files committed, any changes as we inform. Staffing, um, we talked about that earlier. So, overall, we're looking at a reduction in staff, with all those moving pieces and parts, FTE. It's fairly similar to last year, you know. FTE can be misleading, because it could be the superintendent's salaries, one FTE, and the crossing guard is an FTE. Major difference in salaries, so FTE is something that's misleading, but it does give you an overall sense of, uh, of staffing levels within the district. Broken down by school, um, you see, we start with the high school. Uh, stack position there, I think is the removal position, which is likely is your reflection. The, uh, middle school, essentially flat. Mojer. These are very, very, uh, flat across the district. You see, you know, we have, we have several mini individuals in the district that work, they don't work a full-time, that's why you see the fraction. So you might have someone employed with twenty-nine and a half hours. You know, several pair, many, many pairs are in that category, other folks that are employed, you know, below a appropriate basis, so that's why you see fractions in these reports. And we discussed all these major staffing changes before, it's essentially minus three D team positions, minus a couple behavior positions, and then adding the FTE, so. Pretty straightforward there. On staffing, and bits of technology.
Quick, quick question on staffing.
Questions on staffing?
Yeah, just.
Mr. Kasker?
Just quick question, um, not to belabor it. Your favorite page, that favorite three-page one that you were talking about, that bottom-line number's slightly different than this proposed staff.
Reason for that is the.
That's exactly what I'm looking for.
On the object report, three-pager, that's our operating budget, where.
Oh, this includes, like, grant.
Grants.
Got it, okay, that makes sense. Cool, so those extra, whatever, fourteen positions are picked up by the grant, okay.
Yeah, we do have positions that are grant-funded.
Alright, okay, cool.
That's, that's a great question, thank you.
Good question, Mr. Clemens.
We're paying the four fifty-four point whatever ones that's in the object, but that's what our budget's covering. The additionals are covered by grants, okay, cool, thank you.
Well.
Did you, did I get that?
Special ed would be a good place to, uh, to discuss.
Let's discuss.
With Amy's tab.
Okay.
Which we've discussed ad nauseam this evening. But if you, so, if you look at the special ed tab, we give you the formula.
Not everyone understood what I said.
Mr. Gavin asked, uh, about the eighty-nine thousand dollars, so you've got the formula of how the state works it. You've got, um, locations that we use for private and public outplacements, magnets and so forth, a lot of data in here. Tuition and transportation totals, the amount for the budget is one point four million proposed. Andy, I don't know if you wanna give any more, you know, discussion on this, but Chuck could be ready to.
No, it's, it's just, we, we do that page just to kind of give a, a quick snapshot or a quick, um, summary, I guess you could say. Of where some of the students are.
Just like an example of private schools, public schools, it's not necessarily an exhaustive list, it's just a couple. And some of the magnets.
Right.
CIP.
Do you. Mark, can we stop for one second?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Mr. Kasker, going back to staffing, can you just clarify what you, what you had been compared about?
Yeah, I, I think I, I was kind of just shooting numbers that I was looking at, but the board maybe not, didn't understand what I was looking at. So I was just comparing the numbers on the staffing page, the first page of the staffing tab. Right, proposed staff, right, proposed staff for twenty-five, twenty-six, at the bottom says four hundred and seventy point one six. So that number was the total, but I, in my mind, I had that number from previous, which was Dr. Zito's favorite little three-pager he likes there, which was in object budget, right, there was that three-pager, and at the bottom of that page three, it gave a total of four fifty-four. So I was just like, whoa, you know, it just seemed like, where did those num- why are those numbers not the same? Because you would expect them to be the same. One, we're paying, the four fifty-four is what we're budgeting for, that's our operating budget.
It's part of our operating budget.
The four seventy is that plus the positions that are filled by those grants.
They're grant-funded.
Example, some special ed staff are covered.
Are covered by the grant.
The salaries are paid out of the grant.
So are the tutors, yeah, so are tutors.
Yeah, reading tutors, you know, Title One grant covers some, uh, some of our personnel, so we, we have, you know, roughly sixteen or so, uh, whatever the difference is, sixteen.
Positions.
Employees, and part-time employees can figure into, you know, two part-time employees could be one FTE, for example. The number of people are funded through those entitlements. So that's a great question, because, so, you know, if there was some sort of a freeze completely, there would be an impact on roughly seventeen positions.
Right.
It would, it would stop the district from offering school, but it would be a significant impact.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Kasker, does everyone get that? Any, any follow-up questions on that? On the staffing? Alright, and then, Mr. Kasker, I think you had another question, or?
Yeah, no, just on, on special ed tab, do, the number of magnets, just students, do we, can you have a, do we have a, a number?
For special ed?
No, just, oh, actually, I guess for special ed, because a magnet, well, no, this magnet.
We have that in the next, we have that in the next.
Oh, the next one? Okay, my bad. Okay, alright, gotcha.
If you go to, um.
Transportation.
Transportation and magnets. You can look in there.
We'll go back to CIP.
Magnet tuition budget. And we have another, uh, students, student count. So.
Oh, I see.
You can see that there.
Hundred seventeen.
So it's broken down by crack students. So we have, uh, we're budgeted for eighty-nine kids, student count for crack schools, and another twenty-nine for Hartford magnets. Yeah, there's no tuition for Hartford magnets, so. This is the total amount, and then, that number used to, magnets used to be around two hundred.
Yeah.
It's come down dramatically, I'm pleased with that, actually. Came here, it was about two hundred.
It includes our part-time magnets too, that ones that go to the.
Yeah, yeah.
Great Hartford campus.
At one point, I remember this sheet being like two hundred and ten kids, and I, I did say, and I said it to my crack partners, who's the chair, my goal is to keep reducing that number, I want people to be roughly help. And then I want you in our schools, I don't want you in a magnet. To me, it's a quality issue, I wanna offer better quality than what they offer to magnets, and I think the board should agree with that position, so.
We don't incur any of the clause of transportation for the tech schools?
Uh, the tech schools.
Vow ankle, we do.
Yeah.
That's where in here?
There's only a couple.
Is that in here?
That's under transportation.
That's on transportation.
This is just tuition.
Okay.
It is, there is a line in the transportation summary for.
Yeah, it's cool. But overall, you know, you, you, I saw you nod, and you remember when this was around like two hundred kids.
Oh, yeah.
Magnet, now it's down to eighty-nine, so. I think it's moved in a good direction, it means people are pretty happy with what the board is offering here.
Does crack, um, increase their tuition every year, or is it pretty much frozen?
Uh, they just passed legislation, it's whether, um, they did, um, keep it level for this year. We'll see what happens through new legislation.
Okay.
And then, um, facilities maintenance, Ronald is here, if you have any questions about the facility budget, the technology, the magnets. On third day. Ron always demands a lot in his facilities budget. We kept him at a lean, about point seven eight percent. Total difference of thirty-two thousand, uh, no new custodial staff, that'll be the main driver, and you'll see a lot of zero accounts he's gonna, gonna make do with, pretty much flat funding.
Or Ronald.
Sorry.
And that's, that's it, with the exception of the tech cap, I know it makes a lot of interest, so. Mr. Brown, you're good to go for, uh, to kick it off with Mr. Gay's presentation. We're gonna give a fairly comprehensive overview on technology. If you have any additional questions, we're happy to take them over the next couple of days, give you a chance to think about what we discussed tonight, help you in a couple nights to understand the greater detail.
I have another question regarding facilities, with utilities and electricity, so we have it at a zero percent?
Yeah, I mean.
With electricity going up and.
Yeah, well, electricity is very tough for me to budget on the board side.
Yeah.
Because from a town standpoint, we have the solar facility, so they don't have enough use within their buildings to use all the electricity that's generated.
Okay.
So, we, they involve the schools, because we're, we're the bigger electricity usage.
Right.
From the standpoint, so they get credits that are generated through the solar plant. So, we get some of those credits, but it fluctuates quite a bit. So, from a budgeting standpoint, it's very difficult for me to budget just based on our kilowatt-hours that we would typically use, because the, the town basically controls what credits we get from a board standpoint. And so, from, the only thing I, I look at, I always, I track that on a monthly basis. But I never know how many we're gonna get in credits, so I have an ongoing conversation with the town as to, you know, where we're going. But just year over year, we became under budget in the previous year by a decent amount, so, you know, I, I left it flat for this year.
Okay.
But it is, that's one account that's very tough for me to budget.
I saw zero, and I said, that can't be possible.
Well, the credits offset a lot of the costs, I mean, they do. I finished some of those meetings, Mona on the town side, she said, well, you're getting credits on this, and this, and this. If it's not impacting our budget negatively, it's a good thing.
All right. Anyone have any further questions before we finish up today?
Yeah, where is the solar?
Where's the solar farm?
It's down in Dividant Pond.
Any other questions?
So, we, we have technology and CIP, right, we didn't, we didn't.
Yeah, we didn't do CIP today.
Skip over CIP?
Yeah, we did, well, that's. I figured that was more involved conversations, why you skipped it, we just didn't mention it, so. That's kind of a, kind of a, usually a bigger conversation, that might be for another night. And we could save it for another night, I just didn't want to get missed, we were talking technology.
I think that now's a good point, probably, to stop. So, does anyone have, yeah, does anyone have, but very good point, does anyone have any questions pertaining to the, the question, the presentation tonight, before we finish up? I will encourage everyone to go through that, the, the summaries, the more incremental summaries, just to see if anything pops out, anything that needs to be addressed at the next meeting. And then Thursday, we'll start with Mr. Gay's presentation, and we'll have a discussion of technology, and then we'll do CIP, and we'll go from there.
Good way to finish Thursday with technology and CIP.
And then to Mr. Zito's, to Dr. Zito's point, obviously, this is a, you know, a pro, a process that's ongoing, so if anything pops up, shoot an email out, and we can always address it, all right? With that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Moved by Mr. Gavin, do I have a second? Seconded by Ms. Morfeo, all those in favor? Those opposed, nay.